We're gonna call the meeting in order, Amy.
As required by the Open Public Meetings Act of nineteen seventy-five, adequate notice of this meeting was provided on January eleventh, two thousand twenty-four by publication of notice in the Express Times, Hunter Democrat, Huntington County Democrat, and posting of said notice in the municipal building on the same date.
Roll call.
Sorry, Mayor Barseny?
Here.
Mr. Baylor?
Here.
Mr. Beam?
Here.
Okay, not here. Ms. McDermott, here.
Please stand for flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one and the same. In this little liberty and justice for all.
For a motion to approve the meeting minutes from regular meeting of July eighteenth, and I believe there was corrections to that, so would anybody want to make that motion?
Yeah, is this the corrected version?
Yeah, I think it should be for.
Yeah.
Bill wasn't here.
And the total for the mechanical award.
Mechanical award.
It's different.
So he hasn't here, Bill was excused and stuff, so anyway, looking for a motion to.
I'll make that motion.
Any comments, roll call?
Mayor Barseny?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to accept the Treasury's report with the August bill list, the interim bill list, and the budget report.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any questions, comments, anybody need anything pulled? Aaron, non-roll call.
Mayor Barseny?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we accept the tax collector's tax and sewer reports for July. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments on the Treasury's report, tax collectors? Roll call.
Mayor Barseny?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. K, oh, Ms. McDermott, yes.
Chief's not gonna be here. Anybody have any questions? Want to have any discussion regarding the police department report?
No.
BPW, Joe, you have any you wanted to add to your report? You're good? Quiet months, I hope, that's why.
No, we're good.
Well, I saw you took care of that sinkhole on Parker, huh?
Yes.
You got it in time before the rain came.
No, it rained, it rained in it, but they got the pipe into place and stuff, so.
I went by like the next day, looked pretty good, so. Clerk's report, she's not here. Anybody have any questions or any discussion regarding her report? Or report, Paul, you have anything you want to add, or?
No, I don't.
So zoning and code enforcement, Paul, you have anything?
No, I saw it. Everything seems to be pretty accurate, although there's not a lot on the list that he is currently involved with, so. But no, it's pretty accurate, good.
ACO report. Anything, really, you want to add?
Yeah, I was getting that, no, there's nothing. Okay, no rabbits.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the police department report, department of public works report, township clerk's report, zoning code enforcement report, or report in the ACO report.
I'm second.
Any other questions, comments before we go? Roll call.
Mayor Barseny?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Committee reports, really, you have anything?
No, we've been off. We don't have our next meeting until September ninth.
Yeah, it's quiet, it's quiet months. You have anything, Brian?
No, same thing. Paul?
No.
Brian, you're on open space too, though. That's missing Bay. She's running that race. Do you have anything to talk about with that, or do you want to wait until Bill?
Yeah, we'll wait for Bill. That's right here.
Paul, you said you had none?
None.
Professional reports, Finelli's gonna be late. Everything for you as an executive, you usually.
Correct, Mayor.
Old business, municipal complex update. Joe, you're the only one here, we could ask.
No problem. I talked to Danny, the architect, just about two hours ago. All the bid winners have been received today, a reminder checklist. They get their contracts signed and then DCA informs all of them. They want all the contractors to submit at the same time. So Danny's gonna collect them all and probably deliver them. They don't want a piecemeal. This way here, they can do everything at once and issue the permits from that point there.
Okay.
So that's pretty much the update. He said with everything he gave, he sent us out. Hopefully he gets those ready to be returned Monday and looking for pre-con meeting within two weeks.
So breaking grounds?
Well, that will be determined once we have the pre-con meeting to see where their schedules are.
A solid month off yet, if not more?
I'm thinking September.
Okay. Let me know when that pre-con is. I'd like to be there. Truck traffic requests for the device. Everybody see the correspondence to Mike? Mike County doesn't have it anymore. We'd have to hire somebody.
Yeah.
I don't know what we could glean from having a study done anyway, though.
No.
Pay for it, you think?
I don't want to say for it.
I don't want to pay for it.
Anything, I'll look into a counter, see if I can find one. Cause I've done it before.
Yeah.
I, I'll do it. I'll put it on them.
I just don't know what we're, you know, we know there's trucks.
Yeah.
I don't think we're gonna get anywhere. It's the county we gotta go to.
Yeah.
Well, it's not even necessarily the county, it's the state. There's X amount of traffic that they're allowing. It's in their process, so until it exceeds that, and we would need to know that number, and if the number's not even close, that counter's not gonna matter one way or another.
I don't even ever see them anymore. I'm worn and gone, but I see the trucks.
Right.
Might as well get used to them.
I'm just texting Bill to see where he's at. You did it right there. Okay.
You wanna bring up the race, huh?
Yeah, I guess. Okay, so we'll go back to committee reports, we're gonna zoom through that, so we have kind of committee reports, and I know you do, so.
So you want to start with the open space, the race?
That one race?
Oh, hi. Uh, yeah, Brian, go ahead, you can, I remember discussing it. This is the the one that's in our pocket.
Yes, yeah. This was where I was last month, I think. Taliyah's not here. You had to provide information to the chief, yeah, and all that submitted to him and everything?
I did. Everything. I had actually met with the chief early on. He gave me his recommendation as to what paths we should take to avoid going through the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
So I did that. I sent him all the information. He emailed me back and asked how many people. I gave him the estimate that you, that I put in my report to you. And I have not heard back from him, so, but it's all in what was originally discussed back in the spring.
Have you discussed it at open space?
No, that's where we haven't had a meeting. Your request is, when's the event?
September seventh. It was discussed with open space.
It's been a while.
It's gonna be a second.
Yeah, we had to get the approval for the park back in twenty twenty-three before we started planning the event, because we have been planning it. The first event was September twenty-third, so we started planning this in November, so we got the approval for.
You've had it from the park before, too, right? Other years.
Yeah.
It's not your first year.
No, this is our first year here.
Oh, it is?
On the fir-, the, the first year, we went it with his, my, my lead husband was a runner, and he had a running club in Clinton. So we had it there. It was just kind of a fun run, and then now we wanted to kind of bring it back to the community because a lot of people that attended are from Greenwich Towns. We've been here for, you know, plenty of years.
Yeah, it sounds like a great thing, and.
I think back in the answer, and Paul, this is my neighbor Kate. I have about twelve people on my committee. We started a company. We filed for it to be a nonprofit. We're still waiting on the byrest to rent that. They said to move forward with application pending. And all the money, everybody that works in my, in my organization is volunteer time. We have been spent, we spent the past nine months planning the event, getting sponsors for the event, getting donations for the event, so it, it's gonna be great, and it's gonna be great for the community because Tom was an active member.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion. Let me see the dates first.
September seventh.
Okay, September seventh.
And I think. Yeah.
September eighth, that we allow the Strong Lake Tom five K, five, ten K?
Five K and ten.
Okay, five to ten.
And we're doing it all in outside of neighborhoods as per what the chief wants.
Okay, anybody want a second?
I'll second.
You got a second? Any further comments, questions?
When you say you're not going into the neighborhoods, you're gonna try to do the ten K all in the park?
So the five K, what we ran is, we're gonna do the outer loop of the park twice, and then we're gonna go behind the school, go down that long road. Is that Wyndham?
Yeah.
All the way down and back, and the chief said, if you do that, get the approval of the school. So we went to the school, we got their approval. It's attached in your notes. So, so we're doing the two loops and then go behind the school and back to the start line. That's gonna be the five K. And then people that want to run the ten K are just gonna do that once.
Roll call.
Mayor Barseny?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kenya?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Okay. I want to discuss something, but in executive sessions concerning the school district, and then I can come out and make my comments.
Okay.
The, Paul and I had a discussion yesterday about our IT bills, you know, you know, I had like twelve of them, seven in a row from Shannon. And I'm like, we're gonna get this every month. So one of my neighbors, he, he's an IT person, and I gave him the list, and he was pretty much satisfied with, because most of it's subscription stuff. That is a monthly thing, and you gotta have it, you know, so unfortunately, the twenty-two hundred dollars for a laptop for the land use secretary, I thought was kind of high, and he said that, well, where he buys it from, it's about a hundred fifty to two hundred dollars less, and it fluctuates, you know. Yes, yeah, it depends when you order it. Depends the processor, is it an I seven, an I nine, an I four, you know. So I had a conversation with John Paul today, so I, I'm pretty satisfied. The only concern I had was his monthly retainer. And I'm like, so we retain you monthly, but yet I'm getting charged seven hundred dollars when I get the new laptop for you to upgrade. And again, going back to the neighbor, you know, he says, that's, that's the going rate out there, you know, and, and John Paul said, you know, I can take you off retainer, but my hourly would be a little bit more, but, you know, and I've done that, and then people have, towns have switched back to having the retainer. And with IA coming out and all this new type of technology, you're gonna have to be current. He says your insurance companies in the future are gonna be asking you to be, you know, have so much RAM and stuff like that, so, and so, you know, we're stuck, and I'm like, I think we're gonna have to have a separate line of, you know, IT, you know, so. We went through this for several years, and we had a former committee even who does this for a living. Right. And I know nothing about this stuff, so I could get ripped off very easily.
Right, right.
But when he was on, he used to say the same thing, your neighbor would say, he'd look at it, it's all within the ballpark.
Yeah.
Man, it's, it's. So I just think we're gonna have to, you know, in the fall, sit with him again and say, hey, you know, what do you see on the horizon, you know, UPS is whatnot. So I did mention to him, I said, you know, it's kind of more than what we need for her, which I understand she resigned. I read that somewhere, okay, so we gotta go out for the new land use secretary. But I said, can Lisa use a new one? Can the chief use a new one? So I asked him, you know, can we switch it with somebody else? But he said a laser, detective laser.
Yeah.
His is pretty old, and he would benefit more with that one than swapping hers.
Oh, okay.
You know, so I said, okay, discuss that with Lisa and the chief, and so unfortunately, I'm gonna say we're stuck with it. We're just gonna have to increase the line item next year. It is probably a good idea that we probably should break it off to a special thing, because that's only gonna go up.
Right.
And. Right, and he did say, you'll get at least five years out of this, so, you know. Four hundred a year, five hundred.
Yeah.
Four, five hundred. Well, that's a seven hundred. Yeah, so.
Well, Bill, um, I was, not their race, but I was trying to discuss the other race that, that came, I guess we'll hold off on.
Oh, the turkey trough?
Yeah, because we haven't had a land use to discuss that or.
Or, or the.
Right, open spaces, yeah.
So I will.
They want to give.
Yeah, so.
Well, that's for the Christmas.
Maybe we can just get back to her and just tell her.
Well, she could contact the.
Yeah, so just direct her.
Direct her to.
I'll send this to Jeremy.
Okay, yeah, and we should be meeting in September, because we haven't had it all summer, so. You done with your report? I'm done with that one. Thanks, and also, let's go back to the profession. Mike Finelli, Paul, need a second to get ready.
I was hoping that he hadn't gotten to be yet.
Say, well, Mike gets ready. Mike, I just got here like five minutes ago. They're halfway done with the agenda. I'm like.
All right.
Hey, Shannon, S and P Global Ratings, this rating you're at.
Yes.
You know, and I've kind of read through it, and, you know, I mean, a lot of it just sailed clear over my head, but isn't like we're looking for an A-one rating or something of that nature in this one, or is this one something different?
No, it's the same thing.
Same thing, so where is our rating? I did not see it.
It's a, a plus or a, it should be right there on the front page. It's the same as two years ago, yeah.
Oh, AA stable.
Yeah, yep.
I bet, I was just kind of curious. I'm reading all this on it.
It's a lot, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, it didn't change.
Mayor, if Paul's done, can I ask? Pam? And maybe you mentioned it earlier, dog licenses, you're up in Pay Center.
I did.
How many dogs did you find without license?
Well, there was people not owned.
Right.
Out of, I did a hundred and twenty-nine, and there was ten people returned their surveys.
Okay.
So there was like people that answered me, maybe were thirty-five that had dogs without a license, so far. Did they come in?
Thirty-five out of a hundred and ten?
Hundred and twenty-nine.
Hundred and twenty-nine.
Willow Grove Road, I did.
Willow Grove, Washington, Water Tower.
That's right.
Yeah, and then all up at Pay Center area. You're welcome to stay, but I won't consider it rude if you want to walk out. Well, I know how people are when they come.
My agenda. I find this very fascinating.
Okay, you're truly welcome. It's open to public, but I just wanted to say that we won't take it as being rude if you don't want. Wait until we start talking about stand plates and stuff. Get ready, let's go, Mike.
So, all right, my apologies for being fifteen minutes late. Had a late arrival at the office, and as much as I tried to show them out, it didn't work, so, anyway. Okay. There's only a couple of things to talk about. It's now somewhat quiet from the on the engineering side of things. Comcast, start right at the top. Oh, you, was that?
I said please do.
Oh, okay, well, they, you folks probably remember Leon?
Yep.
Who, okay, we found to be, now, again, he wasn't with Comcast, he was with Rhino, but a subcontractor, he was our main guy that we talked to, was good, he was good with the homeowners and so forth, I, for the most part. Lisa got frustrated with him from time to time, as we did. He has left Rhino.
Yeah, I knew you were gonna say.
Yeah, now, so that's not a good thing. We're trying to find now who his replacement is gonna be. So we've been dealing with Jim DePalma, who is, who works for Comcast. He's been at some of the meetings in the past. There are a number of things that are outstanding. Number one, there's this sinkhole on Monroe Drive, which we cannot get an answer from that one. We called again today. When I say Monroe Drive, it's in a, it's in a gentleman's yard, but there's a, there's quite a battle going on between the homeowner and Comcast about the responsibility of sinkhole. So that, that's been the homeowner's calls every day. There's the affordable units, the Revere Road, that's, they're still having, we're still waiting for a final proposal from them on what they're gonna do as opposed to have some sort of Swiss cheese sort of setup with the, with the extensions. That we will fight for certain, but again, we haven't gotten an answer, and maybe the most troubling of all, I would say, is that they, they still are. Let me pick a good phrase. They still are negotiating or coordinating with the county to get their county permit, and they can't finish in Greenwich until they run the lines along the county road. Most of what you're overhead, actually. So that's, that's slowing up the process, which, you know, they're, they're not around anymore, right now, anyway. So the fact that their crews, appointment are not here is not, no, that's not reassuring to me. So you know, it's, you know, it's, it's August, so we, now there's still plenty of time to do the work. I mean, they could do the work in the middle of winter, that, their, their type of work. So we're, we're trying to coordinate with them and continue get, moving this forward to, to get them to finish and be gone where we're happy with what, you know, the, the additional repair work that's necessary gets done. But that's, that's the Comcast.
I know the county is difficult to work with, but wouldn't that have fallen under the seven Ps about having that secured before we even started to? I, I, proper performance prevents.
Oh, no, I, I don't.
Oh, okay. I'll fill you that one in later.
This sounds like a good.
I mean, I, I know, okay.
But yeah, I mean, wouldn't you have had that secured before you would have started anything, considering that is such a key piece to the puzzle?
Well, it is because of the county road network.
Well, exactly.
I mean, we've got, you know, we got, we have more length of county road than we do, well, if you add up.
But it's a lot, right?
A lot, it's a lot. Uh, well, you could make that argument, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm more concerned over the sinkhole on Monroe. Yeah, and I was gonna ask about that.
Okay. Do you guys know what I'm talking about when I say? Okay. I think the address is eleven forty-nine. Don't quote me on that. It's one of the houses on Monroe Drive in Greenwich Heights. And there is a sinkhole which is on the resident's property. It is clearly outside the right of way. Clearly by five feet, but it's outside the right. The, the homeowner, and then obviously the, the, the line has been installed in that area. The homeowner has told us, and we have no reason not to believe it, that when they first came in, they, the sinkhole opened up, or the, the hole in the front yard opened up, and Rhino, Comcast did some work to try to fill it in. So that was that. Well, it has opened up again. Rhino has been saying it's not our fault, because our bowl and our line was nowhere near where the sinkhole has developed. And it's, you know, it's a good seventy feet away. I mean, it isn't that close. So the so Rhino and Comcast went to Aqua and said, I think you got a leak, and I think that's what caused the sinkhole. So Aqua's first go around with this was that, okay, there is a leak. This is where the story gets really weird coming up. There is a leak. We gotta fix it. Well, so we're dealing with Aqua for them to fix the leak, which would have made perfect sense that, okay, the leak in the, in the service line, the water service caused the sinkhole, and it's, it's not a gigantic sinkhole. It's a good six to eight feet in diameter, and it's, it's a, but it's a kind of a stereotypic sinkhole. It's got a, the, the upper earth has fallen down. You can see the throat. It's, it's a simple. So Aqua then, after further back and forth and back and forth between our office, Comcast, Rhino, and Aqua, and the homeowner, they basically come back and say, we did another test, there's no leak. And we're like, what do you, how, how does it, how does it go from a leak to a no leak? So then, of course, with the no leak, so we go then to Rhino, just to get sinkhole fixed. I mean, we're in no position to argue with Aqua about whether they have leak or not. And Rhino at that point, Comcast basically said, nope, it's not our responsibility, whether there's a leak or not, this is outside the line, it's not near our, where. And, and so there's this, you know, everybody's arguing with everybody else. And Pat from our office, well, a few of you know him, he gets called by the homeowner every day. He's so frustrated that he can't like give the guy a, an answer of that satisfies him. So that's the situation.
We want to do this on Avon, same circumstance. This is not coincidence that this pipe broke, or this issue started because, so. In same deal, and this is what I really think.
Okay.
Comcast and Aqua gotta be running to one another all over state. Both they come.
Well, I bet they are. That's, yep.
I think they cover for one another. They say, oh, we're checking out. Oh, no, it's not a leak. It's not this. You need to call them and make an appointment. We want somebody in here from Comcast, because I had it with Comcast. I don't know about you.
So here's my.
If, if we could stop their work today, Mike, I would. That's how bad they are.
Here, here's my concern, and I've said it from day one. How many calls are we gonna get in December, January, when the ground freezes, and we know there's gonna be water under people's driveways, and now they're, you know, being pushed up, and now they're gonna say it's not, you know, not their work?
They hired five by night companies to do the work, and like I said.
I know.
This, this is an almost exact scenario from Avon. Were you familiar with that?
Oh, of course.
Yeah.
They didn't.
And then Aqua did the same thing. They work together all over the state, so no, they don't want to blame one another because they work all the time together. So I, I don't trust either company now, I guess, because of this, but I, I just had it with them. Like I said, if there was a way, which I know there's not a way, I would stop them, but I, I would stop them. What they've done to this town is, is terrible, and it's not just here. I saw you were ship bottoms having trouble with them.
Oh, how did I know?
Low Pat's not extremely happy with them. They are like a rain of terror as they go through these towns. That's that. They are. They're like, they're like General Sherman. They're burning the town down as they go leave. It's, that's how bad I think.
What it worked, Bob, it's very frustrating for Maureen, because, I mean, it's our job to kind of coordinate with these, these contractors and utility companies to get projects done, minimize disturbance, keep the residents happy, all that stuff.
We need to change our municipal code, I think. Now, anybody coming to do this type of work has to provide a list of the subcontractors, I mean, before they come in, records checks, financial stability, everything. That's how I think we gotta get to the point with. I, I'm very adept at these companies doing, or even financially stable. Something happened just soon. They're gonna say I don't know money.
Well, let me say, when we have our pre-construction meetings with, as we did with Comcast, and I think it was here, as a matter of fact, we got a list that are subcontractors. However, we didn't do any of that other stuff. I mean, there's no, we got a list of subcontractors, so we start.
Yeah, exactly. They gotta start, yeah, they gotta start providing all the information on these subcontractors and everything else, records, Better Business Bureau reports, everything on them. That's where we're at with them. I mean, if you can't trust Comcast, a big company like that, what can you trust?
Right.
And I have no confidence in.
No, and I'm like very concerned about what they're gonna say they're gonna do down on Revere Road, because we thought we had it resolved, where they were gonna repave the whole road, because that was the only way to get a decent finished product. And, and now all of a sudden, they're like, well, we gotta go out to corporate, because we don't usually repay full width roadways. I'm like, whoa, 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 that's a different situation here, so.
We have bond, we have bond money.
Yes, we do.
What, we got a hundred thousand? I don't want to know now. We'd ask them for a million dollars in bonds.
So I might think in a hundred and twenty-five, I.
If we had to do it again, I'd ask them for like a couple million dollars bond. That's how much confidence I have in us.
Well.
And for what it's worth, we did send a complaint to the BPU.
Yeah, I could say last month.
And, and they have not even acknowledged, the BPU has not even acknowledged our letter.
And and they have not even acknowledged, the BPU has not even acknowledged our letter.
It's summertime.
No, she did a list of everything that.
Look, we gotta get a holder lawyer and some, we gotta get them in here for a meeting.
Alright, I'll call them and tell them.
Like somebody in charge at Comcast, hey, because they probably don't even know what's going on. I'm gonna sue them, I'll give, I'll give the upper echelon that benefit of doubt that they don't.
Oh, sure they don't. Like, they don't know.
But God forbid, two months from now, they don't take any action because I'm gonna trash them.
Where is corporate?
Oh, yeah, probably. Building down there.
They probably hate them right out there.
They say that building's a nightmare to begin with. So let's move on to our our our, not our next problem, Mike. More materials, I know that you've had meetings with them and so on about solar field and everything else like that, and they're all ready to.
They're ready.
Is the bond in the bank or? If and when they leave and tear it down, they're part of the.
The decommission? They, uh, well, okay, Lisa's not here, because I I think it went to her, I think. Uh, but I know, we, that was one of the items at the pre-construction meeting we had with those guys, which is probably. Three weeks ago, a month, maybe. So, um, no, that's that's been filed.
Okay, alright. Because I was standing here with Lisa, uh unfortunately Jeff was out and they needed some stuff from the state. And Jeff had to sign off on it, so Lisa ended up signing off on it, but it triggered, my question is, decommissioning money there?
Yeah, no, that was one of the requirements of the resolution, yeah, that we, that we kind of, it's a little more checklist. Okay, I'm good. Okay, Wendy's TWA is later, right, but we need to obviously get that that the resolution for the TWA for Wendy Wendy's. I see, no, it's it's here, it's after, it's under, when we get to the, uh, the resolution.
Okay.
But there, uh, we need to get, we need to do that, I think we we noticed.
And have you had a follow-up conversation with them, then they get a demo permit to start?
I, somebody asked me, I think it was Alan Loca, their attorney, I explained, I said, yeah, I don't see any reason, but I haven't spoken with anybody.
Got it.
Alright. And then there's di- there's a dioxane matter as well, which we talked about a little bit last month. And this is obviously the Jeff Hagerty Water Connection, whatever you wanna call it, I see there's other items on the agenda later for that too, though.
Okay.
So, uh, and otherwise, really no, nothing else to report.
Mike, rule of thumb.
Is that gonna get paid this year? That section on Willow Grove?
No, because we decided we weren't gonna do it.
Okay.
Yeah, alright. The twenty.
I think it's fine.
The twenty, yeah, but there's, yeah, it it's, there's worse roads. Uh, no, that'll be, that'll have to be next year, yeah.
New business, anybody have any new business?
Is that what you want me to bring up now?
Yeah.
Okay, um, Mike, looking over, because I, you know, I've I've discussed this closure, been drop off. Disaster at at ShopRite. I was looking over Phillipsburg and they have an ordinance with um the drop offs. Is there any chance you, I know, you know, your firm works with Phillipsburg, if we can look at that language? So we can try to incorporate that or maybe a vote.
Will do.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Did I ask a question if you don't mind?
Okay.
Shannon, did you get my email, asked you to give me a copy of the bill that we sent to the school district? Or uh? The mailing and reprinting of the revised twenty twenty-three packs.
I did not.
It's probably around three, three thirty, I sent that.
Oh, today? Then, no, I did not, I didn't look at emails.
Is it available, can you get that?
I don't remember sending it, no, did.
Yeah, but we did it in November.
I, for some reason, I remember about twenty-seven hundred, twenty.
Was it about twenty-seven hundred?
I think Eloise might have sent it, but well, I'll get, I'll get your copy.
Did they pay it, you know?
Off the top of my head, I don't remember.
Alright, so check to see if they paid it, and it's, yeah, I think it was under three thousand. Because back and forth seeing uh, seeing your your uh Costas is back and forth with the county. Tax assessor, she says it's very expensive to do a.
Yeah, no.
Twenty-seven hundred dollars, you know, so, I mean, so it's not something that. I think I would hold up for twenty-seven hundred, you know, so I think. If if it's gonna be made, you know, the school district obviously would have to, you know, come out of their budget, even though. It's out of each of our, you know, options, it'll be out of their budget instead of our budget, so.
She can't wait until she gets.
Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely, yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, and looking for a motion to adopt Resolution eighty twenty-four parts and refund of main taxes. Resolution eighty-one twenty-four, resolution authorizing electronic tax sale, Resolution eighty-two twenty-four, meaning that twenty twenty-four budget. Insertion of the special item revenue for stop school violence technology threat assessment grant, and we're gonna make the motion?
I'll make that motion.
I mean, want a second, I'll second it, any questions, comments, discussions?
On eighty-two twenty-four, seventy-three thousand, eight seventy-four, changed, what are, where's that money going? You know what, uh, well, we're in, you know.
Well, that's partly, that's probably for the SRO, right, no, no, technology, I don't know.
Is that the stop violence grant?
Yeah.
It's like great that Rich Humber deals with.
Yeah, I know.
With the SRO and some goes to the school for what they have.
Right.
Rich has the free dollar.
Okay, alright. Like anybody else?
Roll call.
Mayor Barsony?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenya?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott, yes.
Uh, looking for a motion for adopt Resolution eighty-three twenty-four treatment works application for Wendy's, Mike, can you explain what that is before anybody makes the motion?
Certainly, I know what they're. There was actually a motion last month to authorize you to sign it, that treatment, a TWA permit, treat, is that treatment works application. When there is a sewer extension, and that's not the case here with Wendy's because they're using septic. Or a large septic, it triggers what's called a treatment works application, which is a a. An application and a permit that is issued only by the DEP, it can't be issued at the local level. Part of the application form requires the municipal signatures. Requires municipal signatures from both the mayor and township clerk. So that's all it is, it's, I looked through what their application form is in conjunction with all review of the 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 project. And everything's in order, it's it's a formality, it's it's procedure.
Okay, anyone make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any further questions, comments, roll call?
Mayor Barsony?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenya?
Oh, yes.
Ms. McDermott, yeah.
Mike, quick question, uh, when do they plan on breaking ground over there, this year or next year?
Oh, no, I'm sure it's this year, they are very anxious to get started.
Is that it over there, the drawing?
No.
No.
That's the the other facility down the street, actually. Yeah, the Wendy's is right here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's waiting for them Frosties.
He's worth a dollar this month.
They're, they are good, aren't they?
I know a family that'll be happy to stop traveling to Easton together.
Looking for a motion to adopt Resolution eighty-four twenty-four, resolution reappointing Judge Bellinger as a municipal court judge, anybody wanna make that motion? I'll make the motion, anybody want a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions, comments, discussion?
So we have them for the next three years?
Yeah, did they go out looking for somebody else, or is this like an automatic appointment?
This is like, we kinda, I am sure, I don't have the contract in front of us, but when they appoint somebody, I'm sure our contract says we have to appoint the same person.
Right, yes, that's the problem with the shared board, you know, but I heard that a lot of people weren't happy with him. He's slow to make decisions, slow to postpone, Mike, what are you hearing in the?
Lou, uh Judge Bellinger, I haven't really, he's usually pretty good, you know, so I don't. You know, he does a lot of, he does.
I'll say to one, I, he always had a good reputation. A lot of problems with municipal court judges is not the judges, it's what the orders are getting from the administrative office of the courts, they can't, they can't. Give certain penalties, they can't charge certain fees, you know, so their hands are basically tied, so it's not necessary to judge. He was always. Pretty much have a hammer, but.
Yeah, he's pretty taught.
They took the hammer from the judges. Okay, looking for a. A vote motion, oh, no, we have, we didn't do the vote, yeah.
Mayor Barsony?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Because this is the only form of protest I have, I'm gonna set vote no.
Uh, Mr. Kenya?
Yes.
And Ms. McDermott.
I vote no too.
Okay. Uh, okay, looking for a motion to open public hearing on ordinance number one oh seven, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-four salary ordinance, anybody wanna make that motions? I'll make the motion, anybody want a second? And okay, uh, we could open up the podium for anybody who wants to speak up, only on this ordinance. Uh, number one oh seven, twenty twenty-four, the salary ordinance, if anybody would like to make any comments. How many can motion we close publicly?
Second.
All favor, I, I don't know if I did a little favor at first, I didn't. Okay, looking for a motion to adopt ordinance number one oh seven, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-four salary, anybody wanna make that motion?
I'm gonna make it, second.
Okay, any further questions, comments, discussion, roll call?
Mayor Barsony?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenya?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to adopt Resolution eighty-five twenty-four, twenty twenty-four salary resolution, anybody wanna make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second, any questions, comments, discussion on that, roll call?
Mayor Barsony?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenya?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to introduce ordinance number one oh eight, twenty twenty-four, in order to amend chapter twenty-five of the township code entitled Stormwater Control. To reflect amendments required by the NJDEP Stormwater Management Plan. This is one of the things I was speaking of.
It's quite, oh, it's it's quite a dog.
Yeah, can we do, no, I guess I gotta do this, anyways, I gotta do it separately, okay, so anybody with the motion?
Well, before we, Mike, on this particular one, and only because it's been a recent complaint that we have, and I'm not quite sure how. Joe and the town are gonna deal with it, and it may not even be a town. In this particular ordinance, is this what has made the storm drains smaller? That are being installed so that there's less infiltration by outside, uh, you know, grass weeds, dirt? Or is that coming up in a different one that's?
Well, no, the the next two, the the next deep, there's three orders coming, this one and two, the next two. Which are all, uh, those, the following two are also a function of these new stormwater regs. Even other very different topics, this one here. When it's stormwater control, it's really. Uh, primarily a a technical ordinance which governs how. An applicant's engineer designs stormwater. It it's, it's not what you just said.
When I get to that one, would you point it out to me?
Certainly, uh, and it's, it's very technical and it's, uh, nobody should expect to understand it. Because. Uh, some of it is confusing to even to me, it's, not that that's probably, I should say.
What is it, thirty pages?
Yeah, it's it's, it's a monster, it's a monster. Yeah, and if you looked at the back, there's all the, there, there's all those frequently, and the reason this is, the primary reason this is being. Uh, adopted is because of the state's discovery over the past few years where. The one hundred year storm really isn't the one hundred year storm, well, we always talk about the hundred year storm. Seriously, you you mean, is this the highlighted, no? No, that, that, we were getting the hundred year storm once every five years.
Hundred days.
Yeah, I mean, and it was like, so they had their, they reexamined all their rainfall data. And basically upped all the input parameters when you're calculating what the hundred year storm really is. And and it's nothing that any but, well, except for me, maybe, in this room is ever gonna have to deal with. And but it it's makes it more difficult and technical to design these stormwater improvements. But that's really what a lot of this was based upon. And you'll see all in the charts in the back, you're gonna take a couple minutes and just look at it, not now. There's all these new charts with all these new rates of flows and inches of rain and things of that nature, that's what we're dealing with with this, this is. Yeah, this is a a, not a, not that it's maybe not warranted, but it's a complex ordinance.
Okay, so I'm still looking for a motion to introduce that. Further questions, comment?
Mayor Barsony?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenya?
Yes. These are all things too, that we don't have really a choice, but.
No, you don't, oh, you absolutely don't, no, you're gonna, absolutely, you do not.
Looking for a motion to introduce ordinance number one oh nine, twenty twenty-four, in order to amend chapter twenty-five of the township code entitled Dormwater Control. They had a new article entitled Tree Removal, anybody wanna make that?
I'll make some of them.
Second.
Any further questions, comments, discussion? Oh, sorry.
No, this is just the one that on on banks of streams and such that you can't remove. Trees and so.
Well, there's also in for development type projects where you're, you have tree removal, there's a replacement requirements and things like that.
Is this the one that all homeowners, if you take a tree down now, you have to replace it? With a one and a half, two inch caliber tree someplace else in the yard?
Yeah.
So in theory, anybody who now in Greenwich Township takes a tree down, has to plant another tree.
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I thought this one, okay.
And, um.
I don't know how we're gonna get that out there.
Well, the po- the policing and the enforcement of stuff like that becomes logistically. For small towns like this, I mean, we still have that. I mean, but that's, yes, but that's the state of New Jersey wants that to happen.
So it really falls under the tree companies, they would be their best policing.
Well, if you look at it from the business side, you're right, yep, it's to their, yep, they could cut it down and then plant a new one.
Or at least tell them that's part of it, right, okay.
Yeah, well, they're a good point, that's true.
Okay.
So if it's a hazard tree? We stop replacing? If I.
You're supposed to technically, yeah, let me, let me look, I I made, I brought the ordinances with me, uh, tree removal, yeah.
Because most of our trees have nothing to do with stormwater control.
No, it's just that, and don't ask me why they did it this way, well, the next one is, it's gonna be the same thing. There was this new stormwater control major league ordinance that was being shoved down every town's throat in the state of New Jersey. Okay. There was also a bunch of other. Well, this this and the next one are perfect examples, tree tree removal and private salt salts, uh, storage. That they, I think they opted, let's just mix, let's just put them in this ordinance so the towns can at least adopt them collectively. So it's not to piecemeal these other things, but, I mean, I I don't know why tree removal should be in a stormwater ordinance. Uh, because in my opinion, it has no place there, but that's the way they wanna set up.
What 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 is this going to affect? I got a tree in my front yard that's half dead, and I'm like, you're not by a, let's see, on the stream there.
But no.
No, it doesn't, yeah.
It doesn't matter, on that near stream, anybody, it's not anybody. Anywhere on your property too?
Yep.
If you remove a tree, you gotta plant it.
Yep.
What happens if we reject this?
No, you get faulted.
What happens if we don't?
No.
No.
You know, we don't have.
No, you can, okay. Have you been involved with anything that that modified this yet?
Oh, no, no, anybody that's modified it, no, I've had people that haven't adopted it. And I've warned them what will happen, because the state's not gonna just let you get away.
No, they're they're not, how long it takes you.
But but people have. I'll say more executive session, but people have modified ordinances like this, and then the DEP said you can't do that and. Our guys were better prepared than their guys, and then they went home and we haven't heard from them in ten years, so.
Okay, so are we obligated now if you pass this? Cause we're only introducing today.
Yeah.
To put it on our website, attention homeowners, when you remove a tree, you gotta replace a tree, I would imagine we're obligated or not?
Well.
He said no.
I don't think you're obligated to do that.
No, you can do it as a public service, but you're not obligated.
No, you're not obligated to do that.
Okay, alright.
There's a bunch of things in our ordinance that have never been on our website and that aren't forced us.
Well. Neighbor who doesn't like you is.
No.
Yeah.
Can we take the vote? No, we're gonna do that.
Okay.
Uh Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
No.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Miss Durkanya?
No.
Miss McDermott?
Yes.
Alright. I'm looking for a motion to introduce ordinance number one ten twenty twenty four, and we're submitting chapter twenty five, it was a township code entitled stormwater control. They had a new article entitled privately owned salt storage.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a minimum, I'm sorry, I'll second, are there minimums? Like, somebody has two bags of salt?
I was gonna ask.
Yeah, you know what, uh this, this one here, we probably are off speaker. But for myself. I haven't like done much or even got very familiar with this, but I don't think that's the case. Uh trying to look right now.
No, again, who's gonna enforce it, and the neighbor who doesn't like this?
Well, this would, this one would definitely fall into Jeff's. Category.
That jail time.
Uh oh wow.
Yeah.
But they, and here, a fabric frame structures, furnace needs the following specs, da 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 da. And, and, and although there was some no votes on the tree thing, I actually, I don't really have a problem with that, you take one down and you put one up. I think trees are uh uh super important to our ecosystem in the long run. So that doesn't bother me, and this one right here, uh I'm just gonna point out one. Um up behind the shop right on Tulsa's part of this property, there's a salt pile there that's continually. Getting rained on, used to be over in front of the target when they were there. And now it's over there, and it's not covered up and.
Right next to the tennis courts, like?
No, 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 uh over behind shop right behind the. And uh it is, the tarp is constantly right, and that's all, you, you, you watch it's heading right to the storm drain. You know, and in this particular situation, I also think. There needs to be some type of regulation to keep private contractors.
Yeah, I. Yeah, I, I can see that point, but.
I mean, you ought to see our salt bin, I mean, it's labeled topped up and things, and it's overdone now compared to the code that it used to be, right?
Well, has, they're supposed to have a floor and it's supposed to be pitched towards back, so any water gets in doesn't run out.
Right.
I gotta whip it ours and it's about.
So, uh in this particular situation between those two piles, cause there used to be a monster one. Over uh on Madison properties by uh the target and such. Uh that just salt was just running into the drain, so I think this is important.
I would assume that the problem is not really from a whole lot of leaking from these salt bins, but it's from the D O P, D O T and D B W spreading ten billion.
Their strength to that too.
Anyway, but yes, roll call.
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenya?
Yes.
Yes.
Nobody protested that one, right? Okay, looking for a motion to adopt resolution eighty six twenty four. Authorizing and the execution of an agreement between the state and New Jersey Greenwich Township. This is for the eight hundred thirty eight thousand dollars to do the uh. Contamination up by your area.
Oh yeah, I'll make that motion.
Maybe I'm a second.
I'll second it.
Make further questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenya?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to adopt the resolution eighty seven twenty four, accepting ownership of a water system. Uh, Mike, you know much about this one at all or not?
Uh no, I, it's, it's going, it's basically this. Extension. Cause it's all relative to the dioxin contamination with that Hagerty connection and so forth. That the town agrees or what will happen with us is it will go to awful. Uh but there's, the, the state who's. Funding this and paying the bill is not looking to own, oh operate or maintain. So they wanna know it's going to some municipal or entity or utility. So, that's, I mean, it's one of the requirements for them to give us the money to make the extension.
Okay. Roll call. Wait, wait, we didn't do it. I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any further? Roll call.
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenya?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to introduce ordinance number one eleven twenty twenty four, and we're mandating connections to the public's water system for properties within the Willow Grove Road and. Good Spring Roads Groundwork Contamination Area.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, but. I thought we already handled this before, we can't, we never mandated anybody to hook up before, did we?
No, but this one is, I think is specific to the Hagerty situation.
It makes it sound like a big area.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah.
The project area is block twenty lot seven oh one, it's just.
Right.
Okay.
And, and with the pay setter, I think, you know, you made the motion, you said Bob seconded it. The pay setter one was, was not being funded by the. New Jersey. And that's how we got around keeping the wells.
Yeah.
So. You know.
Yeah, I, I was surprised that you allowed you.
No, and I think, well, Bill and I both live there, and I would say eighty percent of the people still have their well water, I, including me. Absolutely, oh my god, yeah.
Anyway. Roll call.
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenya?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Yes.
Solicitor permit applications. You know, I have all, I hate doing these with riches in here.
Well, yeah, not only that, but I mean, there's, this particular solicitor's permit is for five people, like one, two, three. Four. Three, four folks. From a disaster solution, people per. Yeah. Yeah, I told them they had to. Right, oh, they, I, I just, I, I. But, I know we've periodically passed solicitors permits for some of the solo people because of the evening hours in contact. And I don't wanna make it sound like I've had an overwhelming number of people who've talked to me, but I have had some who said. What gives you the right to? There's no soliciting in town, what gives you the right to allow soliciting in town because they came in front of the town? You know what, there might be a little truth to that and everything else like that. I never thought what we'd approved before was a bunch of aggressive people or anything of that nature, and I'm not saying that this group is. Four or five people here with, on something that. Sure, we have windstorms, we have thunderstorms occasionally, just, I just don't see a monster. Need for these people to do indoor to indoor in the township.
I agree with it.
The only thing I. Wanna say about this is, I wonder. Yeah, that should have been, that's why it's called why, that's what's made me stutter here for nothing, that should have been redacted, but um. I know over in Pennsylvania, a friend of mine's daughter owns a house and that's on township. He's a retired police officer, so he's over the moon and the lawn, and this guy comes and starts talking to him, so of course he goes out once, why is this guy talking to my daughter? Guy was from a siding company. Looked at her siding and said. You know, all that damage on there is from hail, we had that hailstorm a couple months ago. There's programs. I can, I can do that for you and not get reimbursement from the state, she had a whole house. Re-sided for. Right, basically, the state of Pennsylvania gets paid for it. I don't know if there's a program like that in New Jersey or not, but if there is. I'm not saying we should give this to them tonight, I think we need to look into this a little further, but I'd hate to block them. If that's the case, there's people who get free siding and roofs on it. From the storm here, which is a, Mike was just referencing, we're having more and more, that, that would be my only. Hesitation, I'm, I'm just really getting, use them for your information.
No, sure.
Anyway. So we don't have a motion to. Authorize these solicit, solicitors until we speak more to. The chief.
Um, yeah, and the chief, um. He has not completed the background checks.
Oh, okay. Till next month.
That was easy.
Yeah. But you know, in the meantime, we should try and look into that, if there is a program in New Jersey, cause I hate them.
Sometimes they just use your homeowner's.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say, I know your homeowner's insurance with.
Now, this was through a state program.
Uh interesting. Cause he, he was suspicious of it, then I had to talk to the guy, and he says, yeah, my daughter ended up getting the whole house cited for nothing.
Well, I certainly wouldn't want to stand in the way.
That's what I mean, so that's, you know, I'm just giving for information.
Nice to get a little more info, I think, have one of these people come in.
Discuss that or any kind.
Oh, oh no, that's, that's coming up right here, okay. Yes, okay, so we, we have this invoice uh for the school, it's in your packet for twenty seven hundred dollars. Twenty seven eleven and fifty one cents. And Joe, that was part of, what's, is. Wyndham Farm Boulevard, is that?
That was actually in the, in from the, in their driveway, in the exit lane of uh. The school.
Right.
Wyndham Farm Boulevard, yes, about, it was about. Forty feet in on their property.
Okay. So. Do we need to, we, anybody have an issue with this? If, if you look at it, and I'm fine with twenty seven eleven going to the school, we can have uh. Shannon send it out.
Send them a bill?
Yeah, copy of this.
I thought it was done, I thought you brought this up like two months ago.
No, 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 we, I don't know how it got doubled on the.
I thought we talked, talked about that.
I, I thought, yeah, I, no, I don't.
Oh, not last.
I remember it brought up, and I, I thought it was sent, and I thought the school kind of agreed to pay, I'm not sure about that, anyway. Well, no, I don't.
What was the date of this, Joe?
Oh, what?
It's May twenty first.
I can buy, yeah.
Okay.
I have no.
May twenty first, and I was in here in June, so, you know.
I'll make one of them.
And do we need a motion?
Just tell her, yeah, just tell, sorry, yeah, just tell Shannon. And I'll put that in my amendment to the district, uh school district.
Okay. Everything else, letters from Labor to discuss and. Driver and uh executive. Okay, uh. I'm gonna move public comment up in front of executives, so anybody here doesn't have to wait around for us, so I'll make a motion, open public comment?
A second.
All favor? Podium's open, anyone like, it is comment, it's not dialogue, it's not question and answer, it's. Statement in three minutes or so, that's it, okay?
Thank you, good evening. My name is Michael LaPerry, I'm here to comment on the correspondence of Mister Labor, and to me that was, was in item number nine. Just by, yeah, background, my name is, I, again, I'm Michael LaPerry, I'm a partner with Metalbaum Barrett. And I represent uh the Finsley Greenwich Township, New Jersey LLC. Which is an applicant before the Greenwich Township land use board. Uh for property located at seven one seven, Route one seventy three, the township. So I submitted a letter dated January twenty second regarding uh a requesting reduction in the application fee. That's being charged to the applicant as part of its application. As I stated in my letter, uh Greenwich Township has a code section seventeen dash one. That requires each application be accompanied by a, the payment of a non-refundable application fee. Obviously, that's standard throughout the state of New Jersey. Um however, the calculation of the fee as set forth in section seventeen dash six requires that for preliminary major site plan. Uh the applicant pays three hundred and fifty dollars plus ten cents per square foot of the proposed building area. Three cents per square foot of site uh to be disturbed. And then file major site plan required fifteen percent of the preliminary. C variance is three hundred dollars for the first and a hundred dollars for each additional. So for this application, that resulted in uh the calculation of an application fee of seventy nine thousand four hundred and forty dollars. I don't know how many of you sit on the planning board or hats on the planning board, um I've been doing this for a long time. That's, might be the highest fee I've ever seen for any application. So, um the municipal land use law regulates the uh uh applicability of application fees. And it states very clearly that a, the fees shall be authorized only to defray the actual costs associated with an application. The fees must be reasonable and necessary in order to be valid. Um so therefore withstand any challenge, the township would have to show that the filing of this application would result in seventy nine thousand four hundred and forty dollars of actual costs. Of a particular, particularly municipal operation. Specifically, and I'm gonna quote. The filing fee schedule should thus be designed to recover normal operating costs of the municipal agency. Such as secretarial costs, attendance at regular meetings by the attorney and other professionals. Costs of publication and preparation of resolutions, as well as defray the cost of tuition. For those persons required to take the course in land use law and planning in the municipality. Now, these aren't my words, this is quoting uh the. I guess the foremost authority of land use law in New Jersey, which is the Cox and Coney Treatise. And this treatise is actually now written by your land use board attorney, John Drill. So these are John's drill words, there's, are coming from John Drill saying, it has to be actual out of pocket costs from the land use board in order to be valid. In addition, what he did reference was costs of the professionals, so the professionals are not actually part of that application fee. Professional fees for the lawyers and the engineers and the planners to attend, prepare reports and write resolutions and attend the meetings, those all come out of the escrow fee. The applicant was also required to post an additional twenty four thousand dollar escrow fee, which he did. And it is going to be required to replenish that, should it become necessary if the fees exceed the twenty four thousand dollars. So essentially, that's seventy nine thousand dollars application fee. Is for the secretarial work and for whatever, I guess, out of pocket costs for sending around the, the plans to the various professions. Um we believe the fee is exorbitant, punitive and discriminatory to certain property owners, including the applicant. And it's resulting in substantial undue hardship. Um we know that wasn't the intent of the ordinance to prejudice any landowners or, or any property owners of your applicants. But in practice, this is what's happened with this application. Um as a compromise, the applicant.
You let it give us three minutes for public comment.
We done.
You can be done, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I'm gonna hold you to that, cause I never see an attorney finish on top.
We did submit a reduced fee of uh thirty thousand three hundred and two dollars, I removed the, the, the three cents for site disturbance. We still think that's exorbitant based upon the application that was presented, we don't think there's any way it would actually cost this township thirty thousand dollars, but we think it was a reasonable. Compromise, and we would ask that this, or, I'm sorry, this committee. Um uh instruct the land use board to allow the application fee of thirty thousand three hundred two dollars, uh which is still quite substantial. Uh they, they accept that in lieu of the eighty thousand dollar fee, which we don't believe is, is lawful. Um and again. Uh no, and, and that's all I'm, I'm asking.
Okay, thanks. We'll talk to our attorney and see what it is and. Fire the drill, since you're using his words again. I appreciate you. I appreciate that you traveled up here and stuff to give, that's why I didn't wanna cut you off in three minutes, but couldn't you have just done that in a letter to Labor?
Uh I appreciate your time, thank you.
Have a good night, thank you.
You as well.
Take care.
How you doing, Mister?
Most of the chances for the crystal court. Uh Mr. Mayor, I would like you to waive the three minutes uh minimum, because there are many things I wanna.
I'll give you a couple extra, but we're not gonna go ten, fifteen minutes.
Okay, well then, I, I will request a separate meeting, because there are some major issues here.
Meeting with who, me?
Well. It involves our town, and I'm sure you got to care.
I've been following your emails all day, obviously, you know, you're copied.
Well, I'm bothering you. Well, I'm bothering you.
No, you're not bothering me, I said you copied me.
I know, I know, I have probably, so you're aware of it, but maybe the others are not. Anyway, let's just get to the point, because I know you guys have many other things to, to talk about. There are six issues I wanted to briefly touch upon. And those are, uh, water drain maintenance, water drains maintenance, now towns. Uh, notice of late payment every August. Late payment, tax payment.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. Then I wanna discuss the, my recommendation, that I had sent a. Any mail, letter to Mister Mayor and uh, the B O E, uh, B O E president. About the joint meeting. And I'll talk about it a little bit more specifically. Uh, about the form A F four. Which is related to the five hundred thousand dollars overcharge. Okay, and I'll, again, I'll talk about that and. Who should, in my opinion, you should pay for the twenty seven hundred dollars that it might cost us to reissue the uh, the bills. And and last is uh, rate of us. Okay, so those are the points I wanna talk about, but no, and one more point in the soliciting. Okay, this uh, measure issue is, it's like a vital chord in 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 me and. Uh, when the time comes, me and Mister Bean will just go it. Maybe for hours, or for days, but I'm not gonna give up until we advise the ordinance or soliciting and related. I will not yield of that, okay, but more later. So let's start with the water drains maintenance.
Why don't you pick your most important point, it comes to six different.
This is very high.
Come to six different.
That issue, but soliciting is very hard to me. Very, very vital, anyway. I have a very simple question to ask. I assume we're paying somebody to maintain the drains clean, right? Uh, you know, town, is it correct, or am I just assuming so?
It's not a question and answer, but you can pose your question, and we're, after we close, and we're giving answers.
Understood, okay, so I'm making the assumption. That somebody is getting paid as an employee of our town to maintain the drains clean. Yet, what I have experienced is, okay, the drains are never. So the other day, it just rained uh, for a couple of hours, just like it was a very strong shower. So when I was going to, to the center of town here, okay, it was like, the, the, the road is not, is not flooded, okay? Then, when I came back, uh, thirty minutes later, okay, the road was no longer flooded, because somebody wanted clear. The, the drainage area where the, where I was supposed to go by, because it was all flooded.
Okay.
Well, I don't think we need somebody to to clean the drains after the rain has flooded the road. We want the person to maintain the drains clean. Period. It's common sense, and if you cannot do that, then you should be fired. Um, concerning the notice of uh, late payment every August. I know we issued the, the, the bills, okay, for every year, you know, in August. And August should say, well, okay, you can pay a little later in August, so and so forth. I think it would, it would be useful, you can post that notice on the, on the website. Stating that the bills will go out on this, uh, this day and so on and forth, and you can pay until then, so on and so forth, because you, you guys already know. When the bills will go out. Alright, so we know, because I paid my bill on the first of August. Then uh, I got, first I decided that the bill was paid, and then uh, what do you call the tax, uh, what do you call, but let me get told me that my bill was. Uh, payment was rejected, okay, whatever, so, alright? Um, okay, so now, uh, the joint meeting, I strongly recommend. We want you fixed, we have, I know you guys have no control what's going on in B O E, and I'll make sure we fix that, okay? Unless I die, okay, I will fix this damn thing, right, you will see, okay, I give you a promise. Okay, I'll fix it, but I need your help, and you guys can help us. Okay, I'm going to move bill here, alright, okay, I hope you don't mind, okay, alright, here's my body, alright, okay, alright, so. But I need your help, you guys have to really find a way to basically strong arm Russell Beck. To want to have a joint meeting with you guys, alright, where. The people, she, now she has to basically give us an investigation report of what the heck happened here, okay? Who, what, where, when, how, and so on, right, so we know what took place. Not to hear what that, that being sent out, uh, a, a statement. Saying we and everything else, which nobody understands what the hell is, who did what to where and what. I have no, and I have to, I don't understand what she wrote, alright, okay? Then, when, when the time comes for the bill, because I spent my time yesterday night, I would have done something else, I spent my time talking to, to the county tax assessor. I know, I know, waste my time, okay, I spoke to the tax assessor yesterday evening, and this morning, and the conclusion is. He says, I'm not the responsible, I'm not holding anything up for you guys, he says, the school made the mess, they have to fix it, and when you. The, the way I, I suggest you fix it, he said, you need to issue the, 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 the tax bill. Says it may cost some money, but it says that's how you fix it, okay, alright, anyway, so, uh. I, I suggest, okay, I can't demand that.
You gotta start wrapping it up, cause you've been talking for long, okay?
I can leave you, you want them.
I'm trying to be respectful, the problem is, next week, somebody else will come and walk. No, next month, I said, people come all the time.
You know me, I, I, you know, I don't, I don't make practice of this thing.
I know, I know, I know, that's, I'm being, I'm being courteous to you, but we can't listen to you for twenty five minutes.
But, but I'm not here for twenty minutes, twenty five, you see, now, now you're really making me, what you want, I'm here for all, all you want, that's what here. Instead of letting me speak, you really.
Okay, we're over ten minutes now, so, okay, you're, you're, you're. Yeah. Okay.
We'll find another way to get this thing done, alright?
Oh, you wanna hear what we're gonna say? Anybody else? I'll make a motion to close. All favor?
Aye.
Anybody have anything they wanna respond?
Well, I mean. Go ahead, as far as the drains and things go, and I mean. There's a comprehensive program here in town about road sweeping and drainage, and we rent machines and blow them out and stuff like that. But there's always gonna be falling debris, grass during a heavy, heavy rain.
Heavy rain and and things.
You know, I'm gonna be perfectly honest.
Blowing their grass into.
The volume of people which.
Supposed to, as per the stormwater regulation.
People think that I get a little worked up when I see people blowing. You know, blowing grass into it, you know where that grass ends up? Blocking a drain, you know, and and so, but the point is, there is a program in place here. That I think between our sweeping, some areas four times a year, some more than that, that. You know, it's already there, and when you see a problem, but debris and trees and things and leaves, that's a, you know, that's a monthly happening. You know, there's no way to, to, to not, we're not, we're not sending someone out every day to look and dry this. So, with that being said, that problem, you know. It's a fine situation, is there gonna be an occasional drain that gets blocked up? Absolutely, nothing you can do about it.
Right, you know, and we see it all the time, you go to Greenwood Street after a heavy rain, you see the leaves, the. Even the green leaves that fall off a tree, they run alongside the curb, you know, there's nothing you can do about that. The joint meeting. With the school district, I don't know what will be accomplished, but. We can at least say, hey, somebody suggested it, what are your thoughts? I think we did that. Fifteen years ago, maybe, way, way back. Uh, what else do I have here? Oh, that A F four form. You know, it's gonna get corrected, alright, when? And you know how state government works? You know, I finally got a letter, Mike, on my. Thing that I sent down to the state, I forgot.
It was like a rig your like speed.
Well, no, it came in like.
It came in August.
It came, it came in late July, and I, I think I sent it to them May fourth, somewhere along there. But it, it makes sense what they said, and no, you can't do it, you know, so, but I wanna give it to you, so you can put it in the back of your file. In case somebody else brings that up.
Yeah.
And I'll share it with the rest of the committee, what I remember to bring in. I'll bring it next meeting. So. And regardless, we're paying, oh, it's gonna come out of this full budget, but ultimately, we're paying for it, cause I write one check. You know, so, but it's not coming out of our budget, I'd have to probably come down, down. So.
I just wanna say for the people at home, cause I'm sure you're gonna say that and cut them off, we allow people three minutes, and we're always pretty generous, let them go over three minutes. Somebody can't come in with six different topics and wanna talk. He was well over ten minutes, I believe, and they closed it, I didn't really keep close tabs, but. And he got angry, but. If we had twenty five people come in and wanna talk for ten, fifteen, twenty minutes, we're up to one o'clock in the morning, so. I wasn't being rude to him. He's, you know, he, he could come each meeting for each issue, he not seven at one time. And he has come in the past, and he's usually pretty respectful, I don't know what it was tonight, he didn't wanna seem to. Listen or talk about it, but uh.
But you suggested if he wanted to have a meeting with you, he said, yeah.
I didn't even say, I didn't say yeah to that, but I think he wants. He wants unlimited time to address this all, and he wants us to have, I was like, he sent me an email, well, I'm copying an email, he didn't send it to me. He wants to have a joint meeting with the board of ed and us. And, you know, he putting all kind of parameters on it, like. I want, residents should be given at least ten minutes to talk. You should have to answer every question immediately, if I do, if someone asks a question, and if not answered immediately. Within a certain amount of time, you have to respond by email or correspondence, and have a meeting every month until this tax issue is resolved. Which, it's fine, he's making a suggestion and a recommendation, but. He's trying to run the machine, machine, uh, meeting, he actually got his point, he was trying to tell us, this is what you're gonna do, and I'm gonna talk as long as I want. I tried to be as respectful, I think I was respectful, I don't disrespect the guy, but, and then he storms out like.
I'm not sure that version's gonna be on social media tomorrow, but.
So anyway, okay, so I'm looking for a motion to go into.
Before we do that, uh, I have a question for Paul, I was going through the um. Document that Shannon provided, where we stand through August fifteenth, and I noticed we haven't paid the squad yet. I think there's a outstanding amount of money, Shannon, how much money?
What do you got around September, October, anyway?
We had this discussion last.
Yesterday, cause I wasn't a hundred percent certain how much the insurance payout was.
Yeah, so I, when I'm in the office Saturday morning, I'll email him back, but yeah.
All favor?
Aye.
Hopefully, it won't be too long.
You all have a nice weekend.
You too, thank you.
Can I make a motion to come out of public, I mean, uh, executive session?
A second.
All favor?
Okay, uh, Mayor, we mentioned executive session at eight twenty three P M, where we discussed, well, we had certain things on the list, but we're gonna discuss next time, so. Attorney client privilege, security and personnel, police and contractual police will be discussed at the next meeting. We discussed the current, attorney client privilege dealing with land use board application fees. And we discussed attorney client privilege, school board uh, items, no official act was taken, copy of these minutes will be available at such time as the committee determines, there's no hunt to the public.
Okay, uh, I'm looking for a motion to authorize the attorney to take action. As discussed in executive session on these two items, I'm gonna make that.
A second.
All favor?
Aye.
Anybody else have anything else they wanna discuss or bring up?